I am going to call this school committee meeting to order on May 2nd, 2023 at 5:26 PM. And the first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sam, he says he can't hear us. I'm not muted, I don't know. Brian, can you hear me when I speak? Do you want Anthony to look at it? Bear with us, though. Do you need to lift your microphones? No, we can't. The microphones do not work.
Oh, so it's just five ways. Nice and close.
Yes.
So, is he going like this, you know that we need to...
Oh, I know, I know. It's definitely gonna be one of those nights where we're gonna be yelling at everybody. Okay, so while they are working on that, I'm going to do the audio disclosure, which, as you know, this meeting is being recorded by the town of Winchden. If anybody could slide Miss La Pointe, right, I happen to know who's trying to livestream it, is recording it, please let us know.
Please let us know.
Mike, can you hear us?
I am.
Okay.
Trying to, at least.
Right. And I want to say a special thank you to Miss Petty and Miss La Pointe for trying to at least livestream for public that could not be here tonight, because they coordinated that after what happened at last week's meeting. Also, and I think that's all I can say for our audio/video disclosure. What we're going to be doing tonight, for those of you who were not able to join us this afternoon, we did do two Zoom interviews with two candidates. We will be interviewing two candidates tonight.
Nice one, just press this here.
Yes, this is Brian.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, thank you.
I think that we have now started a new subcommittee called the IP Anthony Fenway Committee. So, as many of you are aware, we are in the process of trying to find an interim superintendent for the Winchden Public Schools, and our first candidate, I believe, is here, so I would like to invite Shawna LaPointe to join us, and she can come and sit over on the side so that the cameras can capture her. Good evening, Miss LaPointe. And I, just because we have done this with every candidate, I will do it again. I am Karen Castle-Bryce. I will ask my committee members to introduce themselves, and then I'm going to ask you to introduce yourself to the public, both in person and viewing via multiple venues. And if you see where you're going like this, give me a speak up, okay?
Hello, Shawna, and thank you for your interest in this position of interim superintendent. As you know, I'm David Winchdon, and I'm the chair of this one.
Point of order.
You by name?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. LaPointe, I believe this is an relative of yours. Is it appropriate for you to take part of this conversation? Or should you recuse yourself? So let me address that right now.
Please, thank you, before you get into it.
So, on July 1st, I had a conversation with State Ethics Commission, and explained to them my relationship to the candidate, Shawna LaPointe, and their advice to me was I needed to file a disclosure of a parent's conflict of interest as required by general law, chapter 268A, section 23B3. This document was filed with the town of Winchden, the town clerk, it's available for everyone to see, and I want to make a couple of things perfectly clear, okay? And I know you probably have a question.
There's still more questions.
Right, okay. So what I'm gonna tell you is this, this is what I've done under the pain, the penalty, perjury, and on the oath, is that I described the issue, which is Shawna LaPointe is an applicant for a position for interim superintendent of schools, and then the responsibility of my action and decision-making, I will be interviewing and voting to appoint an interim superintendent of schools, and then I explain my relationship or affiliation to Shawna LaPointe. Let me be perfectly clear. She is married to Jeremy LaPointe, a friend and colleague of mine. Jeremy and I are solo practitioners and have law offices in the same building. I am not related to either Jeremy or Shawna LaPointe. And to further that, it's been said in town many times that Jeremy was my son. While I know I'm old enough to be his father, but that is further, that can be further from the truth. So what I did, I did my diligence. When I knew that Shawna had turned in her application for this board, I actually contacted an uncle of mine, cousin of Jane, LaPointe, and I learned that in our ancestry genealogy, going back to Canada, that there was absolutely no connection to Jeremy LaPointe in his family, no connection. And to add to that, Jeremy LaPointe did the same, and he created a genealogy, and there is no connection between ourselves other than our names. And I thank you all for bringing that up, I was gonna raise this at the end of the night, but that is my explanation, and I did indicate that I will be casting my vote to appoint applicants solely on who is best qualified for the position based upon their experience, education, and the interview process. There will be no favoritism or improper influence factored into my decision. And then I confirmed that by check putting an X next to this statement that the state requires. Taking into account the facts that I have disclosed above, I feel that I can perform my official duties objectively and fairly. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. LaPointe, for answering that point for us. Thank you, and thank you for bringing that up. All right, so Anthony. Brian, would you like to introduce yourself even those who can't see you?
Hi, Miss LaPointe, thank you for being here, thank you for your interest in the position.
Thank you for joining us, too. Okay, so would you like to introduce yourself? I don't know if you have to, or if you'd definitely...
Well, I'm not really... So, my name is Shawna LaPointe, I'm a current Winchden Public School employee, I am part of the administrative team. I came to Winchden two years ago when I had decided to leave my leadership position in Pittsburgh. I worked in Pittsburgh for a long time as an instructional coach to work on improvement processes, improve teaching, improve school, and all various reasons. I came to Winchden because my friend, Jess Vazina, also told me that there was a job available in her school, and she knew I was on the market. She had me apply for that. At the same time, I was applying to be the lead math educator in Webster Public Schools. I turned down that position to come home to Winchden. I also took a pay cut from the position I was leaving to come home to Winchden. I am, I've been in Winchden since 1989. I spent all of my education years, starting in Marvin, all the way through to 12th grade, going through to Winchden Public School. I'm here because of Winchden, I live in Winchden, my children go to school in Winchden. I had the opportunity to bring my child to school with me in Pittsburgh and pick the best of the best teachers and put him in there, and I left and lived home in Winchden because I believe in this community, and I believe in the educational systems that we have, and I believe in our teachers. Many of our teachers have been here 20 years, 30 years. I've been in other districts, that's not long. There's a lot more teacher turnover than what we have in Winchden, and I'm dedicated as a community member to provide that because I know I can.
Excellent, thank you. And as you can imagine, we have some questions, of course, so I am going to let Anthony lead us on.
Ms. LaPointe, what is your idea of position as superintendent for Winchdon Public Schools?
Well, for me, what attracted me is already in Winchden. I was encouraged by many teachers and many other people in the district to apply for this position, so I really thought about it, and I know that I have the background in education to help. I'm able to be on the ground immediately to help the teams. I have multiple degrees in education. My most recent degree is in educational leadership, focusing on superintendent positions in turnaround districts. I'm also more than halfway through my doctorate in the same area. I have the advantage of just coming home, like it never felt more right. When I came and I started, I went into a sixth grade position at Murdoch, and it didn't feel weird. Normally, when you get a new job, you have to learn the ropes, you have to learn to be part of the community, and I wasn't. I came in, and it was a perfect fit, and I intend to finish out the next 20 years of my career at Winchden.
So could you please tell us what you know about the Winchden Public Schools right now?
So right now, I know a great deal about the Winchden Public Schools, all the way down to the positions that we need. I know that our district improvement plan was last year, and I also know that our district improvement plan last year didn't address any special education. I know all the data in the district. I am very involved with working with other administrators, helping them navigate through data and make educational decisions. I know what we're working on, I know the curriculum that we've brought in, the writing curriculum that we've brought in, I know the professional development plans that we're working on. We've had a lot of changes. We're eating, changing our structure with the maintenance department, and looking into changes that way. So all the procedural knowledge is there, and the thing is, I know the teachers, and I know what they've been saying all year. Come to me, they know that I listen, they know that I value them. So I know a great deal about Winchden, but one thing that I really know is that we're the type of community that, though we might have low achievement now, but giving the parents the information that they need and the communication from the district, we can join together and make this better for our students.
Thank you. What are some of the special considerations for an entry plan for an interim superintendent?
So luckily, I already know many of the open positions and structures that we need to be working on, having already spent the past year looking at processes and trying to improve them. So the first part of my entry plan, which I have a four-phase entry plan, would be assessing and building the team. Right now, we need to do a staff needs assessment and figure out what positions and what qualified candidates we're going to be putting into those positions. We need to do a special education process review where we're looking at our IEPs and how the schedules of services are being put out, and we need to look at the professional development of our teachers to make sure that they are getting quality professional development. We have so many strong educators, and I want to move into a model where the teachers are the ones helping and providing professional development instead of continuously outsourcing professional development. It needs to be a balance of both. And then after that, we would be working on, in the next phase, would be addressing the achievement gap. We have a lot of data, and we've introduced a lot more assessment systems this year so we can use that data to help. But one of the specialties that I have is, having been in an urban school that was not performing well, I have a significant amount of training in data and analysis processes, and from that, we can be looking at how are we making plans, how are we going to engage the family, and all of these data points that we do have, we just need to analyze. And some of these data points I'm already scheduled to be working on with the Director of Curriculum Instruction, Dr. Landon, on Friday, to be working on the district improvement plan. And then from there, after we get, are working on the achievement gap, which the achievement gap in Winchden between the regular, between the state and the students is very large, but in addition to that, if you go drill down into our subgroups, the special, we even have an achievement gap between our lower-performing students that don't have any services and our special ed students. A lot of our kids that receive special ed education services have low attendance, and they also are not making gains at the same rate. This past year, we have record of like solid gains, but that is a one-year point because before, the district didn't collect as much data. So, and then the final system would hurt both, and then from there, we need to create councils with families to give the parents a voice in the district. I ask the district parent and district employee to understand the value of listening to our parents. The parents are the first educators of our students, and then from there, we just need to work at continuous improvement cycles, all the way down, working with teachers individually because they have such passion and knowledge, they just need feedback and communication. So there's, you could keep going, but that's the beginning of the plan.
Thank you. How do you maintain the morale during the interim situation or transition such as this position?
So, the main thing for me is to treat everybody with respect and assume positive intentions. When you treat people with respect and know that they're there, even if you disagree with them, they're there for the right reasons. That's usually how things work in education and with the teachers, that that is the way to keep morale up because they'll feel respected, they feel heard, they understand that we're working on this together. So it's a back and forth, and then it's really about what type of leadership model you choose to go with, and for me, there's many types of leadership, but for me, it's servant leadership is the type of leader that I am, and when I say servant, I mean I'm in service to the students, and we make all decisions based on what is the need for our students. So every person has to be like, how is this going to impact students, how is this going to improve outcomes for students?
How do you see your role in working with the community during an interim superintendent?
Unfortunately, Winchden doesn't have a ton of community partnerships right now. What I mean that is from the administration directly to parents. I have an expertise in the area of family engagement. I have been a professor for Pittsburgh State University, I'm one of the founding professors in their middle school program, and I've taught many courses, but one of the courses I refused to give up is teaching educators acquiring their masters. It is called family and community engagement, and I teach other educators how to open their doors to public, how to get people involved, how to treat the community with respect, and how to meet the needs of the community. Yes, we're in service of the students, but sometimes that involves educating the parents and helping them. So it's very tied to my service of students and my background in the area of family and
All right. What do you believe the relationship between the interim superintendent and school committee should be?
So, school committee, as a former school committee member, I understand the role of school committee, but I also understand that school committee is there to speak for the people, to be an advisory council, and to be held accountable to. As a superintendent, I would need to be held accountable. You need to make sure that you're getting all of the voices heard and things like that, and it's a partnership, a collaboration. It's there to protect the students, to protect the community, and it's very valuable if done correctly.
Thank you. And what do you see as the special mission of an interim superintendent?
So, it all depends, it would be very situational depending on the needs of the district. In this case, the primary focus is looking at the special education department and figuring out and supporting and making sure our kids that have the highest needs are getting what they need. That is the first major thing to look at, would involve reviewing almost every IEP, reviewing all of the IEPs, looking at past IEPs that may have not been granted, and kind of making sure that we have done what we needed to do to provide the quality education for
What can you do as interim leader to prepare for a smooth transition and for the next year?
So, what we can do is we set up clear policies, processes, procedures that we adhere to for the year, and we are able to relay those. We can have things that we need to clean up, and we can use improvement cycles to get things cleaned up, and then we can have everything accounted for in clear statuses for a person to then continue on in the position. I've stated that I've been on being in Winchden for 20 years, so even if I didn't continue on as superintendent, I would want to continue on in a leadership role. There are some retirements in other positions coming up in the next years or so that I would be able to maintain and work alongside with any new superintendent in collaboration to make sure that there was a smooth transition. Thank you.
How's accepting the position as interim superintendent fit into your long-term goals?
So I always wanted to be superintendent of Winchden. I've never wanted to be superintendent of anywhere else. I joined school committee until I left and went into working in the school that was very transparent about my intentions, because I wanted to be a member of the educational system, so I volunteered. And then I went in to become a classroom teacher with no expectation of anything else, just because I wanted to be part of the Winchden's community. I was done leaving, I was done traveling to work, I know that I have skills, and I wanted to use them at home. Moving forward, I plan to spend the rest of my career in Winchden, no matter what role
I have one last question to ask all the other previous candidates, plus, huh? If chosen for the interim position, what would your effective date be?
It could be effective tomorrow, I'm already working tomorrow, so it would just be a pivot. And one of the benefits with me already being an employee, I don't have to go through all our hiring processes and things like that, we can get, I can start calling some of the candidates that we have in these open positions starting tomorrow. I would be able to hit the ground running. I don't need a significant time to build relationships because I already have built relationships with many of the people that are working this summer and many of the teachers in the district. They know who I am, they know that I care about them, hopefully, they know that I'm here for them, I'm speaking for the Winchden Public Schools, because we have so many quality educators that just need to be supported.
Thank you. All right, and our last thing is, do you have any questions of us or fond thoughts that you want to share with us?
So I will be handing you because I was prepared for any type of question you gave me, I have some random notes, and I'll just leave with you, just if you had any other questions, I made multiple copies, so I'll give you that. But one of the things is, I'm not here for this to be a stepping stone. Like I said, I intended on trying to do this, you know, a little later, but an opportunity opened, and I know it helps. I don't think any district should have, be a stepping stone. The students in our district deserve for somebody to be here, to be invested. I'm invested as a community member, I'm invested as a parent, I'm invested as a graduate. The reason why I love education and went to become an educator was because of the Winchden Public School. I didn't have any other experiences. I was here K-12, and these teachers, many of them are still here teaching my children, are why I came back. I've always wanted to be here, it was the first shot I applied for, didn't get it, I was 22, you know, a little green, but it also will be the last position I, the last place in our path.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for your time, too.
Thank you.
For being here.
Just in case I didn't know what you were gonna ask, so...
Wait, you're saying that's good?
I'm not, I'm being formal.
Just some potholes. Yes, there is all the potholes, absolutely. We should really talk to the board of selectmen. Don't have board of selectmen now. So for those of you who were unable to take part in our Zoom meeting earlier, what we did previously was that we asked, we had a chance for us to give a little feedback, and is Ryan still with us?
Yeah.
So we're gonna start with Ryan again, because we never know when we might have to jet off.
Hi, everybody, thank you. I thought you interviewed well. Shawna's been such a successful member of Winchden Public Schools in the role that she had, and you know, obviously is now a new fixture or an advancing fixture in Winchden Public Schools, so that works well for her. She doesn't have the same variety or length of experience that some of the other candidates, you know, seem to have, but when we see the last one, you know, we'll be able to sort of balance everything at that point, but as far as I can tell, you know, she did well tonight.
Excellent, thank you.
I do agree with Ryan on most of his points. She said all the right things, especially things that I like to hear. Wants to stay here, is vested in the school, has a child in the school, so where the school system goes, obviously, it will affect her probably more greatly than anyone of the other candidates. Wants to stay here, wants to be a permanent fixture, you know, she did mention that vested interest that she has here. Yes, she doesn't have the same background, and as the other candidates, I absolutely agree with that, but she gave away some interview and said everything that she needed to say. She does have the knowledge and the roots in the school system to affect the people who are needed.
Just briefly, I would add this, that as I said before, I'm a proud Murdoch alum. My education here at Winchden has served me very well in my careers, and it's really nice to see that a fellow alum who's on her way to becoming that successful person and that she wants to come home. I think that's crucial, you know, in this case where we have a situation where who would know our district better than somebody who is there and who's been there now and who has experienced the crisis that we're going through? Who's ready tomorrow to reach out to candidates and start bringing them into the district? Because we have candidates, contrary to what people are saying on Facebook, right? And nobody's gonna want to come here, we have no applicants. We do. We do. We have some very good qualified applicants. But I'm just saying, and this is in my opinion, regardless of the last name, I just feel that that is certainly a plus for Sean to be coming back home and to take in here not just, you know, her children who are in the school, but all of our children. You mean two names?
Yes. There's only two?
Three.
I was going to say, I think you're leaving out. Wow, David, wow, you're awesome. I will say that Sean did interview well tonight and that I think she has an amazing background with degrees and everything. And I do like to bet that she is a candidate that is here. She doesn't have to come home, she is home. However, unlike the rest of you, I have a lot of concerns. I don't want somebody that we are, that we have to train as a superintendent. She has absolutely her concerns as a superintendent. I feel that it is important that we have somebody come in here as, that has the experience as a superintendent. And quite frankly, given the state of our district right now, and given the state of our district right now, we need somebody that can clean up on aisle four. So, as much as I may enjoy her interview and admire everything that she has done to support this community, I would love to see her mentored towards the possibility of superintendency, but I don't think that's something that she is quite ready to do. But that's just me. And we still have another candidate, and hopefully he will be here soon. And we will hear from others. I asked him, because we don't have a waiting area here, and we didn't want him walking in on Sean's interview, I kind of asked him to text when he got here. He's supposed to be here till 6:15. I had about 45 minutes for Sean's interview, so we have a little bit of time. Do you want to make that motion?
I made the motion, and we took a recess awaiting our next candidate.
I will cycle out.
David?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
And the chair both sides. We will be in recess for 10 minutes. Yeah, I think I'm very late. Do you want to?
Yeah, I just want to.
I am breaking, I am breaking. We'll be back in session from our break.
Yeah.
Hi, Mr. Joyelle. I'm Karen. You can come and sit over here with us. We're having a good career.
I see. Right, be careful there.
I'm going to let, I'm going to have our committee members. We do have one committee member on today. She's probably at the beach sunning herself. Somebody likes a book. So, I am going to let my other committee members and Jason follow.
Anthony Bennett?
Next chair.
Ryan?
Hello, Mr. Joyelle. Thank you for being here and thank you for your interest in this position. My apologies for not being in the room with you.
Hello.
And what I would like to give you a chance to introduce yourself and also a little bit about yourself.
Do you want me to put it through the mic or?
The mic does not work, so just beep up the owl or the air. And Ms. LeBree, who is one of our board of selectmen people, will go like this if you're not speaking loud enough.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Roland Joella, and I appreciate you having me in tonight to hear a little about me and maybe how I can help assist Winchton in doing the next year. As many of you have probably seen my resume, I didn't read all of that together. But most recently, I've just come off of my job as the executive director slash superintendent of the Lower Kinda Valley Education Collaborate. So, I've retired.
I'm sorry, a little bit slower.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will. Not a problem. I just didn't want to keep everybody too late here. But Roland Joella from the, just retiring right now. Just retired from the Lower Kinda Valley Education Collaborate. So, right there, we did a lot of different things there, and I think a lot that will actually help fit into this job here in Winchton as well. Prior to that, I've been fortunate to work a lot, have a lot of different experiences with a lot of different towns. Your posting talked about, you know, obviously suburban slash rural type setting in this scenario. I've been able to do that most recently. Some of the rural towns that I've dealt with at the collaborative, in Hampden, Southwood Collin, in Brandon, in that sense. And then the other towns were suburban towns, in that sense. Prior to that, I had some experience working in cities and fortunate to have been promoted in my two other jobs in the same districts. Started my career in Springfield. Actually, started prior to being a teacher in Springfield as a substitute teacher. So, I've done everything from being a substitute teacher, started that when I was doing grad school, and then started as a teacher in Springfield, and then became, same building, became a vice principal, was promoted there. Did a lot as a teacher. I think one of the things that you're going to hear of tonight that I think I can help you with is that I've done a lot, and I've had quite a bit of experiences for doing that. Doesn't mean that, you know, I'm perfect in that sense and all that means, but I've done a lot. While I was a teacher, I ran the National Honor Society. I revived a lot of the ski club. I coached the soccer team when I was there. I did a lot of different scenarios. When I became a vice principal, I was fortunate to work for a great woman who gave me opportunities to do different things. Many of you know, a vice principal sometimes can be seen as disciplinarians in that sense. I was able to work for Dr. Southworth, who knew that I had some thoughts of becoming maybe a principal someday and doing some different things, where I was able to do some scheduling, do a lot of quality management at that point, help with some of the committees, the school councils, which in turn, you know, I was able to then turn, go right next door to Chicagoee and was a principal of Chicagoee High School. That was a long, I did a long time there, 18 years as a principal of Chicagoee High School. So, I had a long run there. When I started, the school had just been put on probation from the Accreditation Movement Association of School of Collegees. We were able to turn that around. Some good bloods a little of the building. As you know, sometimes you'll do that with buildings, but there were some other issues as well there too that we were able to turn around. Had a great, obviously a great run. I don't know, you have too many runs in 18 years, so I love that job, love that. I think they liked me, obviously, I was able to stay there for a long time and then be promoted within the city of Chicagoee to an assistant superintendent from there. And I've sent you some of my references, my former superintendent, Reggie, has a lot of references in there for me as well. So, I did that job, did HR, human resources, a lot with personnel, grievances, negotiations, and a wide variety of other things. One of the things that stands out in your application when I was looking over your websites and seeing things, and I'm not sure if it's just a matter of how it's listed because of personality move, but I did notice when you go to the DSS website that the superintendent is listed as the HR. And that could have been a recent move or it could just be a kind of a title that happened. And I'm here to say that I did that, did that, and have done that, and done a nice job. He's also listed, was also listed as the transportation director. I'm just coming off of running four garages, 250 vehicles, 250 drivers on that. I may have some experience that I can help shed the light on with that as well. And also that the superintendent sits on the CAPS Educational Collaborate Board in that sense. And as you know, just coming off of that, very familiar with MOIC, Mass Organization of Educational Collaborates, where I was the secretary and dealing with the other 24 directors across the state for collaborative. So, then most recently, I had this job. I'm still young. I still have time to work, you know. Some of you may be retired or may be close to it in life. You get to a point where the numbers are there and you need to make an appointment. Stop because I really wanted to. I stopped because it kind of made sense to do it number-wise, but otherwise, I'm looking to do, obviously, I'm here with you tonight to help fill in doing interim. You keep working. I come from a family of educators. I'm the oldest of eight children. My mom and dad were educators, teachers, and vice principals. My dad retired in Massachusetts years ago. He then crossed the border and worked in Connecticut for a lot of years as a principal. So, and of the other, of the eight of us, I'd say the eight, my brother and sister, a little tidbit here, the seven of us are in schools. We all used to say five of us were really teachers and educators, but most recently, in the last few years, my brother is an SRO, School Resource Officer in school, and my sister is a physical therapist in a neighborhood in this area. So, many of us are in the education field in that sense. So, that's just a little about myself, a little background for opening and how maybe I can help fit in some of the items here initially.
Excellent, thank you. And as we come out, we have some questions. I'm sure you're absolutely not prepared. So, I am going to let Anthony lead us off the class.
What attracts you to be the position of superintendent of Public Schools for Winchton?
I think you have a lot to offer in Winchton, you know. And as I go around prior to this interview, I've been up here, been up here many times shopping in this general area for furniture, doing some things, right? That it really is, it's a nice area. You think about what people are doing. And we know that, that a lot of people are leaving cities. You know, I grew up in Springfield, was born and raised there. No problem, right? But we do know a lot of people are leaving urban centers and cities, and this has something to offer people. You have great schools, great natural resources, great community support. There was going on all the outside loops out of there to help, you know. I saw the Blue Devil Weekly. I want to be interviewed on that, you know, after I saw that. And do that, like those, the children, the students, they did a great job of producing that really nice background set and microphones are professional. And so whoever's the advisor was doing a nice job of doing that as well too. I'm thinking, boy, I could, I could be, maybe invite me on as a guest on that, maybe, you know, can tell them a little about myself. But I think that you have a lot to offer surrounding communities and of drawing students in. And there's a lot of different things. I also think that in terms of being interim superintendent, I'm a personable person. I would get along with the board. I'd be able to work with the board on that and set things up for the next person coming in. When I knew that I was going to retire, I started taking, I'd always been taking meticulous notes anyway, keeping folders, did a great handoff to the gentleman who just took my job recently, and that's it. One of the things I would do is working with the board, the school committee, seeing what your direction is for this year, where you would like to go. And I think that we could open up some avenues and some doors and keep some notes for the next person coming in. So, when the next person coming in, comes in, I've been there, done it. They're going to do an entry plan, right? They're going to do, going around and meet some different people, similar to what I would do here anyway, coming through the door. Like that amount is extensive. But at least we can give them some folders, some free data already for them to go. So, when they come in, it might be a little less work and they can hit the ground running with their classes.
You touched on some of these, this question, maybe you can add a little bit. What do you know about Winchton Public Schools right now?
I know that, you know, you have about a little over 1,000 students in that sense, over half with low income. That's about 18%, specialification there. Some of the scoring could use a little work. And that's nothing I can fix, and don't get me wrong, overnight, things like that, but you're asking me what I know. So, I did my homework. I'm not going to come in here and not do my homework, right? That would be foolish of me, in that sense. But as a group, none of the groups, neither averages, these aren't individual students, because you have many students who are proficient or exemplary in that sense and meet some who are proficient. But as a group, there are no groups that are in the top two categories with the state. And you just can't change things overnight. I understand that, but those are some things that need to be looked at. You know, of the population, there's about 22% of the population here is under the age of 18, which means, you always have to remember that, that almost over three quarters of the population doesn't have children in schools in that sense and supporting schools. But I think there's ways we could reach out to support the schools in dealing with the old, burnt-out community center. They have that. You have great resources up here in the sense of there's so many activities going on. I wasn't around last Friday night. I was away, but I saw that there was a PTO fundraiser at PJ Slushies, I think they have, in that sense, to raise money. You have niceties, things like that. That's like to me, knowing that the community is engaged and they want to help the schools. And then what we need to do as the schools is help the community as well. So, it can't be one way. We just can't take, right? We need to give back to the community as well. Maybe we can help with senior center and do some different things. Or our high school students could do different scenarios, or students could volunteer, or volunteer. Maybe seniors could volunteer. You have a web page, only the pages ask for volunteers in that sense. So, and obviously, everybody knows it's Toy Town, right? In that sense, Grace Tree signs, by the way, is that there as well too. Infield, that's really the start of the toys. It's the start of, you know, the boxes that are made for collars. Everybody knows that, I'm sure. And then when that went down, it came to a toy. So, no, I've done a little, done my homework. And I think that the town has a lot to offer people who want to live here and get a nice education in nice buildings, great networks of resources here, physical resources and national, natural resources as well.
What are some of the special considerations for an entry fan for an interim superintendency?
I don't mean a lot of people, but I can do that. So, I want to do that, yeah. Obviously, building administrators, our teachers, teachers on the front lawn, right? We know that. They're in there doing it every day. Secretaries, lunch ladies. I've served lunch before. I've driven on buses every year. I ride buses to and from school to see what's going on. I have a little background in transportation in that sense. I would work individually and group-wise to get a collective sense of what priorities you have for the issue pretty much. I know some charges, right? And you may have some priorities you're already working on, plans that may or may not be going through, and avenues that may or may not be. And then we can start working on some of those scenarios. The other thing I mentioned to you earlier would be, what are you looking for in the long term? Can I start some work with the people that we have here to get ready for a term? Because I know that, obviously, many of us would be here just for a year. Because I know that, obviously, many of us would be here just for a year, myself, doing that, in that sense. But somebody coming in, there's a big difference coming in, having somebody can do something to you, and prepping, versus coming in and starting from zero, you know, and I don't want somebody to start really hitting the ground running, and I think you would want that, too, after what you're going through.
All right. So how do you think came morale during this interim situation for a transition?
Open door policy, you might hear that a lot, too, but as I said, the chair, some reference letters that I've had from people I've worked with, and various superintendents and like that, because I know that in a short amount of time, like this, in 45 minutes, it's going to be hard to tell you 30-plus years of my life, and what I've done, and we all know that, many of you have been on interviews lately, know that when I walk out of here, I'm going to say, darn it, got to tell them that part, right? There's so much more to do, and to maintain morale, getting out there, as I mentioned. They'll see me in the schools, walking around, as I mentioned to you, I've served food in the cafeteria every year, I've ridden down the school buses every year, I go to town events, not only school events, not just sporting events, you know, theater, choral, those types of scenarios, but go to town events, the amphitheater, or different things that are going on around here, could be seen, because that's where people can talk to you, in that sense. And I can't tell you how many times I've been to events and games, and somebody, we all know how it's done, they kind of mosey up to you, and give you a little in your ear, right? In that sense, and that's somebody's opinion, and we know that as well, too. But there's always, as I said, there's always sometimes two sides of the story, so we always want to come back and get something. But you want to be out there and be open and listening to people, because what people want in life is to be heard. They'd love to have you agree with them a lot of the time, but that doesn't always happen, and I understand that I have to make decisions at times, and we all do, that people don't agree with, but at least you can hear them, and then give them reasons why you didn't make the decision, maybe that they thought was the right way to do it. So those are some of the things that I would add.
How do you kind of answer that last question, but I'll ask it anyways, how do you see your role working with community during the interim superintendent?
Yeah, I would see it really no different than I would jump into my job. If I was selected, it'd be honored to be selected, I would jump in, and I'm doing the job, that's what you're paying me for, to do the job, right? Not to take a cake ride through the next year, no, I'm coming in to work. I've just come off working 30-plus years non-stop, but haven't had a summer off, which was nice, had July off, which was actually nice the first time since I was 16, my wife always said, take it, in that sense. But I would come in, and I would meet with, as I mentioned a little earlier, and not just to reverberate, meet with police chief, the fire chief, people in DPW, elected town officials that are out there, different pockets of groups of employees in the school system, and again, yourself, because there's a lot to hear, people want to be heard, and there are a lot of good ideas, and when you think about all the people that work in the school system, there are a lot of smart people, right? You got a lot of degrees out there, I mean, college degrees, but then there's a lot of degrees in just real life, right? Whether you're the custodian, the lunch lady, no matter what your title is, you have a degree in experience, a life experience, in that sense. And I have no problem, you can talk to anybody, get me down the derby, and I'm physically dirty, I can do that, too, but talking to anybody, and I don't mean that they're jobs of dirt, and that's what I was trying to analyze on that, but I can talk with people. It's not going to be hard for me to walk into the back of the cafeteria and, you know, see what's going on, and have lunches for the day, or walk in and sit down with the custodians, and ask them, how are they going, what do you need? One of the other things I see in the job, doing as superintendent, because I can't do everything, and you need all the employees to do all the hard work, in that sense, is how can I help, what do you need, is getting them what they need, whether it's materials, sometimes it's morality talked about, in that sense, years ago, with students, I've done different things, I was taped to a wall, duct taped to a wall, then they pulled it thing that you're standing on out for, I don't know if anybody has ever done that, when you get duct taped to a wall, it seems pretty neat when you're standing on a milk crate, until they take it away, and then you drop, and the tape pulls your chest back, and you can't reach it, so you can't really stand on a wall too long. I've kissed fish, I've done the ice bucket challenge years ago, and that was done, we did that, so getting out, talking to our elected officials, our employees, seeing what's going on, and what can we do to support them. As I mentioned, I can't always expect to get from people, we need to give as well.
Thank you very much. What do you believe the relationship between the interim superintendent and school committee should be?
I think it should be great, and why wouldn't it be, in that sense? We're working with each other. I would see myself, depending on how your protocols are, whether I would talk to individuals or take things through the chair, honestly, you would tell me how you would want to do that, but we're going to have open communication. And I'd rather over-communicate than under-communicate. And I've done that in life with my emails, or even phone calls, because if I send you an email, and you already know the information, and you don't want it, just hit delete, but at least you can't say you didn't get it, in that sense. And phone calls, in that sense, not send that talk to you, every single day, you know, if warranted, we would, but when things warranted, you're going to be kept in the loop. No surprises, is my motto, and that, nobody likes surprises, okay? You don't want to hear about something going on, let's say, at one of the schools.
On Facebook.
Yes, exactly, or by the phone call, right? Some of that might happen, because listen, we know that, you know, you get one police car that rolls up to a school, or a couple of them show up, and parents are calling them crazy, right? They're calling them, and all it was, was I'm joking, I pulled fire alarm, or maybe something, right? So, and everything, you'll have to trust my judgment, but I have good judgment politely, and I know I have to try to sell myself here a little, right? Over the last 30-plus years, and not being like go for many jobs, or doing anything like that, where I've been promoted in the sense that people realize I do have good judgment, and will be able to keep you informed as to, but I'm also looking for feedback through you as well, in sense of, as we mentioned earlier, what would you like for an entry plan, where would you like to go this year, this is something you're going to start to collect some data, get some things ready for the posting that would be coming out, in winter, whenever that would be going, and get it ready for it to hand over.
Great, thank you.
So what do you see as the special mission of an interim superintendent?
I think the special mission is to keep progress going, it's not to stop. As I mentioned, it's not to come in and just kind of sit back in the chair and, you know, Joe, I don't even sign a check, but you know, we sign a check, or see what's going on, it's to see what's going on, and I think that, given my experience, and what I've seen, I've seen a lot in life, and when you work in different districts, you just get experiences, and I've seen a lot, and I may be able to come in and offer some tweaks. I don't see myself coming in and turning the whole place upside down, at all, that's not my MO, in that sense. If someone would come in and I'm joking, like, fire, right? No, can I do it? Yeah, but, well, I, you know, I don't know people, I got to get to know people, and see what's going on, but I want to work with them, and want to know what you're, obviously, I'm not here to introduce you, but if I was selected, we would have conversations of that, should rather be a small, little retreat, a little working session, individually, as groups, that type scenario, and what you're looking for in the next year. And I think that I have contacts. One of the things that's happened over the past years is, I've been fortunate enough to meet a lot of people statewide, as I mentioned a long run, as principal, with the Mass Principal Association, doing a lot for them, most recently, like the last seven years, as the Superintendent's Association, doing a lot with that, unfortunate that I know people all over the state. And you're, when I go online and looked up a lot about Winchester, you might be familiar with the DART analysis on the DESI website, that compares you to light towns and communities that are out there, a lot of those fall actually in Western Mass, when you look at that. You have Palmer, Gilman, and Greenfield Gateway, right? Applewood, so it does a lot with our sports in Western Mass, in that sense, there, Who's it North of Adams, Clay Bog, so, you know, I know all those superintendents, I can pick up a phone, call them, I can call the commissioner, you know, he's a great person, he gives superintendents a cell phone, I'm able to call people across state to help Winchester, and help us get what we need, or get answers for what we need, and that appears to be that.
What can you do, I'm not yelling at you, last meeting I was getting yelled at for being too quiet, so, what can you do as interim leader to prepare for a smooth transition and success for the next year? I think you've covered quite good of that, so if there's something you want to add to that, I've been taking copy of notes, as I'm sure you noted, but if you have anything you want to add to, like making the folders and everything on the sticky side.
Yeah, no, I think that I can do a lot of the pre-interviewing, pre-talking to some people, and a lot of day dives for the new superintendent, and dealing with town officials from the budget scenario, things like that, and maybe, you know, knowing that, you know, I would be named out in a year, I understand that, too, maybe you got to have a fallback, you got big shoulders, right? Blame it on me, I got to fight for a few extra dollars for the teachers, or do something in that sense, you know, or work with town officials. And when I say fight, I say that for like, yeah, not, we're going to, we're going to stick up, right? For our fair share, and what we need, and also working with our legislators, and I think that's something that we need to do a lot, too. You look at the state budget, the 112, if it's even voted on, yet in that sense, leaving out the universal lunches, the breakfast and lunch right now, things like that, that need, you know, sponsorship, and need our legislators to know, yes, we need that, we need free breakfasts and free lunch in our schools, right? That's the best, that's the best, and one of the great things that happens, it's the money that came in with COVID, well, that's all right, but please do it, because you can't learn if you're hungry, at all. And, you know, I can't tell you how many times we've all seen, if any of you are educators out there, students come in in the morning, and go to the nurse, and what's the one question the nurse asks before nine o'clock? Did you eat breakfast today, or did you eat anything? No, little crackers, glass of water, or something like that, next thing you know, often the class happy is glad, right? Because they have it, so. Working with other legislators, not just that, but obviously more funding, whether it's the special education, whether it's the transportation, you name it, to make sure that Winchester is getting not just their fair share, even more.
Thank you.
How does accepting the position as interim superintendent fit to your long-term goals?
This is, as I mentioned, this is what I want to do, I want to, I think I have knowledge that I can help districts, in that sense, so I'm not ready to go sit in a rocking chair and do that, maybe someday, someday, maybe way down in the future, but that's not now. As you know, I'm retired, so my long-term goals are to do this, and to help districts, in that sense, so I'm not going anywhere, if I was a successful candidate, in that sense, I'm yours, right? I'm here for the year, or whatever you need, in that sense. I think, as I mentioned, I have a lot of contacts to offer, I have quite a bit of past experience that would help your district here, from being with the collaborative, being as a transportation, dealing with HR, being a building administrator, being a teacher, being a substitute teacher, and doing a lot of the different things that would help Winchester, and giving some knowledge back.
The last question is, at the point of the position, how soon can you be able to start?
I'd start tomorrow if you need me. I was going to go away for two days, but I'll start tomorrow, in that sense, but I am available, and ready to rock, well, I know this school starts pretty soon, yeah, it kills me to see those commercials on TV, because we know they're national, and some of these other parts of the country are actually starting just this week, and they could wait a minute, and then, of course, going to the store and seeing Halloween stuff up already, so it's coming. We know it's coming, we know there's a lot of work to be done, and I don't know what, how much has been done, or hasn't been done, I would look at my, has been done, or ready to get going, but no, I can't start over there.
Charter schools have also started in the state. All right, so what I would like to do is give you a chance, if you have questions for us, or having time or lots you want to share with us, because as you noted before, just like you, having done interviews, there's all of that, what didn't I say?
Well, no, just to the board, not to, which I'm sponsoring, but what are some of the priorities, and I don't mean general, there are certain priorities that you're looking to work on in the next year.
One of the, one of the things I would like to see is appointment of long-term individuals in administrative positions.
Excuse me, move that, please?
Sorry. One of the things I would like to see is appointment of long-term individuals in administrative positions, people of best interest to the community, to the school, people that aren't going to use the place to step in, so, that's one of the things, writing the ship, that from the outside looks, is a little bit of saying, oh, I know it's not, most of the people in here know that it's not, but it's still a convenience, that's most of my reliance.
Thank you.
Hey, yeah, just, we need to rebuild our administration, as you probably know, we have a superintendent designate, and who's also our director of finance, so we do need somebody tomorrow, we do need somebody to work on getting those positions on the running to make the interim successful, and to know that as a board, we're unified and full and fixed for this year, for school events.
Ryan?
Hello, everyone, hello, Mr. Doyle, I apologize I could not hear Mr. Finley, but I suspect that he and I, and David are going to say something similar, and that is that we really are looking for someone who can come in, you know, spear the ship in the most immediate sense, and do so with skill and ability. Obviously, we are up against the school year, and it's necessary to get some things in order, in order for the school year to start well, and so we're, you know, hopefully looking for someone to do that in the near future, and your last answer was great to you.
All right. I think in addition to, if you've already heard, I mean, I think they did, clearly say something, we do, we obviously have an immediate need to get somebody in that can hit the ground running, and help us fill some positions that need filling. We do have an administrative team, it's just not as robust as we would like it to be, and there are other positions, there are two positions that absolutely will need the help of the interim to fill, that shouldn't be a school team to review, and I don't want it to be. There are some other things that I'm not going to get into in public, but we also have, unfortunately, a special education department that is in shambles, we have a communication issue with our district, and the people of this town and this community, and unfortunately, there's also a trust issue, there's a broken trust issue, so, goals for me are to be built, and shine some sunlight into all the dark places that have been allowed to roam, and that's very important to me.
Well, thank you, it's nice hearing you, although, if I may, you've mentioned goals, you said a few things, thanks. See, I think to find that transparency, we hear that a lot, right? Transparency, it seems to be a big kick-around word, but if you talk to people I've worked with, you'll know that that's what I'm, it's an open door, I'm an open door and an open book, in that sense. And our jobs are too, right? We're all public officials, in that sense, public budgets, there's no secrets, I always tell people, come on in, you know, whether it's school committee members, when I was a principal, come in anytime you want, there's no secrets here, in that sense. One of the other things I think I can help you with is hiring, I think I've actually done a nice job, my career, I will say, hiring people, I've been fortunate to, any of you are, I'll use a little analogy, like, hopefully somebody like Patriots, maybe, like Bill Belichick coaching tree, you hear that a lot, and I do have to sell myself a little to you, right? To pat myself on the back, I think I've been fortunate to hire, while I have people do a lot of things, superintendent in the past, I love Lo, he and Agawam worked for me in the past, the principal I'm on at a high school right now does, so I've been, the assistant superintendent- So I've been, the assistant superintendent now, Chickaby, who's a former hire of mine. In that sense, I think I've done a nice job of not only hiring people, you can pick out, you know, hopefully good qualities in people, but then nurturing them along. Don't get me wrong, they've, they've done a hard work, you've done things. But sometimes we need to give people opportunities. As I mentioned to you earlier, I was given some nice opportunities from some women who led me in the past. My principal, and then my superintendent, Chickaby, in that sense, who let me do other things that were probably above, back then, or above your job in that sense, but knew that it would get you ready for a future job. And I'm going to leave in that sense for to grow. And sometimes it's, as you, as you've seen, it's within the same business. And be ready to have a succession plan many times and do that, so. So I think that, yes, we are a couple of weeks away from the start of school. I don't know all the need really about what's out there. I can get up to speed really quick. Might be a little tough to steal some people away from different places with a few weeks to go, but you never know. You gotta give a shot and see, see how we can draw. Because there are pluses and minuses to all our jobs, right? We all know that. The grass isn't always greener on the other side, but sometimes it is. And many times you can draw some people over in that sense from other current positions that they either not happy with or would like a little change. And as I mentioned, I don't know everybody in the world, but I know a lot of people. And I think that I can help you by getting the word out and, you know, amongst like world of superintendent friends, things like that, and getting some, a plate of candidates to apply for the job.
Excellent. And if you think of anything on your way out, you can always send us an email. I'll share it with everyone. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you for coming. I happen to know that you were at a Patriots game day when you lost.
The practice, yes. Getting those open practices.
So we definitely know he's a Patriots fan for those who are coming. So thank you for your time. And if you have any questions or anything, feel free to reach out to me.
Okay, well, I appreciate your time and thank you for everybody coming out and showing interest, which is, this is actually pretty nice to see a robust crowd here. I mean, I know, obviously, we all think it could be bigger, but let's be honest, it's the middle of the summertime. It's a great day outside. We know that. So the fact that you came here to listen and hear about the candidates tells me that people are interested. This is the place that I like to work.
It had to be livestreamed because we've got a snafu with our, our system being rebuilt in the town hall. So because we can't broadcast it, one of our lovely parents is livestreaming it for people who could not make it. So there is a lot of interest that you're not seeing.
Oh, that's all right.
Oh, yeah.
Hi, everybody. Good, hit the like button for me, right?
Subscribe and share.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. So we have, we are now going to have public comment and. Oh, yes, yes, sorry. It's been a long day. Let's have our feedback first, and we're gonna start replying. If he hasn't left us, go drink a Monforte. Somebody else got a Monforte.
Hi, Darren. Did you say you're looking for the nickel box for Mr. Doyle?
Lead back. Yes.
Thank you. I think Ian did really well. I think he's got the experience and the resume for sure, you know, can do the job. Not, I'm not supposed, not quite as comfortable as in preparation for tonight's interview. I thought maybe some of the information he had about Winchman was relatively thin, but otherwise, you know, answer the questions and definitely have the resume.
Okay, thank you.
Most of you are without assessment, just because of the places and facts of the town he was being prepared for. I think he was ill-prepared for it. He was shoot from the hip for most of that conversation based on his plain and expensive knowledge as a superintendent. I think he should have all well-prepared and looked at the questions a little bit better. Not a very well-prepared man at this position at all. I thought he was BSing most of the time.
So I got a very different reading in that particular interview. I got a very different reading in that particular interview. I felt that, that perhaps with his knowledge and experience, it sounds like his next chapter in life is to do just that, to go to districts and help districts to, to right the ship, maintain the ship, and then hand it off to another leader. So I think that that's really what stood out for me was his ability to network. He had a lot of contacts statewide, a lot of superintendent friends. And I think he finished things out that he wants to get Winchman more than just what, what he should get. So I just thought that that was a plus. And that's probably one of the new professions for retired superintendents is to, because there's so many openings across the state that interims are needed badly. So I think that coming in would be, you need somebody of that type of temperament as well.
Thank you, David. So I'm kind of split in half. I, I kind of, I agree with you, David. I think that he did come in and he does, I do believe that he has the experience to help us. And I think he's definitely a people person, but I'm also a little weary because I'm having flashbacks to someone else. So that's where I'm gonna leave it for right now. So on that note, we are gonna open this up for public comment. And, you know, I made sure that we had public comments after all the candidates because we wanted to hear from the public on your thoughts on our candidates tonight. I will tell you, I think most of the people here already know the, I mean, fine. I, I never had to read the public comment disclosure before, so bear with me for a moment while I find out what's next. All right. So. Yeah, this is an old one. So it doesn't help me, actually. So I think most of us know that the public comments is, the public comments are to be within the purview of the school committee or within the schools. That each member may speak for up to three minutes at a time. Each candidate may speak up to two times. All comments must be addressed through the chair. And I already said it must be within the jurisdiction of the school committee. So potpourri go to Mr. Ward and Miss LaBree, not to us. And obviously, you have protections under free speech, so please be kind. Remember that you're being livestreamed as well as videotaped. Don't say anything that you don't want your mother or your child to hear. And all, all, any written comments are welcome. If you are not here tonight and would like to send in comments, please feel free to do so. And you can send them to all members of the board. And we'll have to get a new list out, an adjusted list now that Anthony finally has an appointment and email. So with that said, we are going to put our, our public commentees, because of the way that things have to be taped tonight, in the same seat that our interviewees were in. So if anybody would like to join us for public comment, please.
Sure, why not? I'll go first. We don't have to, it's not a piece of gum.
Okay.
My name's Michelle. Just curious, thanks.
Speed, louder.
Oh, wow. My name's Michelle. My speed is still pretty simple, pretty fast. However, I would just like to know as to why Ryan is still here if he got off and left and walked out and resigned? Because that's pretty frustrating how you can pretty publicly humiliate people. You've got to humiliate yourself and walk out and resign, but still he's here. It's absolutely ridiculous. Thought the last guy was, as well, Anthony, yes, and everybody. But first, I think she's a person, her resume wasn't the best for the superintendent position, but that is what I have to say. Go to the front.
And if the board, board select members have any complaints about any damages, they should see the standup.
Uh, gee, a second question. I just, I had just a couple of comments and just one quick question. So I had, was here on the Zoom and as well as the town hall interview. So I was able to see all, or hear all four candidates. I was hoping to hear a little bit more on budgeting in regards to their more, their experience or hear, you know, get questions in regards to their budget. I know maybe three or four candidates had touched on it with experiences or what they had, had done in regards to budgeting. I know we do have, our budget is approved and such, but going forward, they need to kind of utilize the budget and adhere to it. So I was, I was kind of hoping to hear a little more on that. I think Shauna, just, you know, to touch kind of on a few of them. The first person would seem to be great. I think our three and the four seem to have more experience. I think Shauna really loved that she was at home or that she wanted to pursue and not use it as a stepping stone, stay here, et cetera. However, I just hear like budgeting, experience and so forth. We've had superintendents in the past that didn't, we had too many, too much budget experience and we kind of got into some, some issues. So that kind of worries me a little bit. But I feel that she's definitely a great candidate or she's, you know, she had some strong communication and other kind of skills, et cetera. I guess in regards to the school committee as, as a whole, I have a question. And just to kind of piggyback on the previous question. From what I understand, a resignation has, has, a letter has not been sent from Ryan. So he has the, the authority, or I guess the, he's still able to be on the school committee. But I guess my question is, if, if his intent was to resign and that he left the meeting abruptly, why would he not, why was the letter not submitted? And/or why is he still, what was his decision or change of interest to, to remain with the school committee? That was my question and no person's concern.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. LaBree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll do the brief. For the record, I'm here speaking tonight as a citizen of the town in non-henetic official capacity. I also attended the Zoom meetings. I think all the candidates have something, something to bring. That's the chair, because I'm fully sinking again. But I just, one thing that I want to make sure that you consider when, you know, when you're making your decision. Over the past 20, 30 years, we've seen a lot of different types of relationships between the school and the town, town manager and the school superintendent. Some of them have worked well, some of them have kind of worked maybe, some of them have been to the point of being writers and detrimental to, to the town as a whole. So I would just ask that when you're having your deliberations, keep that in mind as well. That we want to make sure that, we don't want to go backwards, I guess is the best that I can say. It wasn't, it was not a specific, it was a question. One candidate did, did speak about public officials and town officials and such like that. But I would ask, it's been raised in the past from citizens that when it's a good relationship, everybody's a little bit happier, when it's not, they're not. So just be asking to keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Ward?
Like I do agree, I'd like to say I'm here as a citizen, not as a selectman. I'm also here as a proud graduate of our high school, like Mr. LaPointe. Unfortunately, I was, I'll be up several years before he ever graduated. Class of sixty-four. So first of all, I want to thank this committee for coming up with such a good set of candidates. I was impressed by all four, really. But looking at the candidates, this is my view. Mr. Finley, for the first candidate, he said, this is going to be a tough one to follow. So I was impressed with the first candidate, and I'm still totally impressed with the first candidate. I think you've got the years of experience. We are going through a rough time. We need somebody who's got that experience as a superintendent, who knows how to get this thing going right from the start. We don't need a training session at this point. So that's the person I go with. Now, the other person I want this committee hopefully in the future to consider is Shauna LaPointe. The enthusiasm she has for Winchman is a plus. I don't think she has the experience. She's never been a superintendent or a principal. But I think somehow in the coming year, whoever, whoever you pick as the interim should be a mentor to somebody like Shauna to help her get ready to take over that position or to take over it in a couple of years so she can fulfill her dream and she can get the training, the background she needs. So that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you. That's me, all right. Anyone else? Anybody else want to sit in the local seat, Dr. Ward? All right, so at this point, I'm going to open, yeah, open up deliberation, so.
Madam Chair, can I have a little verse?
Yes.
So thank you, Mr. Ward, for sending all of that out. But I do agree, my, my choice of candidate is quite obvious. You can first candidate with the expressed interest of what she said in that she wants to mentor somebody in the district and build them up. Anybody that's ever had a conversation with me, I'm all about internal promotion, leading people in that position, people in vested interest. I would love, I thought Shauna did an excellent job. She just doesn't have what we at the moment, a year from now, two years from now, working side by side with superintendent, that is, molding and shaping and giving the experience back to somebody who clearly has what we need, which is passion and fire to lead the school. She can be here for a number of years with the hand glove. I highly believe her when she says she's here to stay. I think this candidate said everything, had everything on her head and on her nail. I thought the other candidates did a, a very good job. There was, the second candidate had tremendous amount of experience, but it is in fact an interim position in that moment and is only moving for a maximum of two years. If you can get two years out of her or just a year and have somebody in the wings that can fill in a position if she decides to leave abruptly or even two years. And, you know, Shauna interviews and does exactly what she did today with maybe a different school committee or the same school committee up here and assumes that will. Shauna said to us that she didn't want the position. Shauna said it was that she didn't want the position right now in her career, but it was the time to set foot and show that she had the interest in that position. I think she's the perfect candidate that we, my kids need, everybody else's kids need because she has that vested interest in our school, in our community, and she's brought up through the system. Um, my, my selection will go to voting, will be the first candidate and hopefully she can follow along with. What I feel is the best route for the, for the district.
Is it playing it?
Yeah, absolutely. So if anything, what you'll get from this particular board is going to be that transparency. It's going to be full disclosure on this board. And I indicated earlier on my disclosure form that I'm going to cast and vote to appoint the applicant solely on who is best qualified based upon their education, experience, and the interview. And with that, staying true to my word, I am going to also support the first candidate. Who allowed us to call her Ruth Ann, even though she was a doctor. Uh, that seemed very humble to me. Um, and again, like Anthony said, um, I would like to see as well that if we can put in a mentor program, Mr. Ward, that you mentioned as well, I think it'll be a big benefit for, for our kids. And that's really why we're here tonight, for our kids, not for ourselves. Okay.
Ryan?
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much. Uh, if it pleases the Chair, I would be willing to address the, uh, public comments, uh, that were asked about my disposition this evening prior to taking feedback on the candidates. Would, uh, would that be, uh, something the board would welcome?
Yeah, you can absolutely do that. Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I appreciate the question and frankly anticipate this question because it makes perfect sense. Uh, as everyone in the hall probably knows, I announced last week that I intend to resign from the school committee. Um, since then, I have been on vacation. Uh, while on vacation, I have been communicating with our Chair, Karen, to help transition everything smoothly. Uh, I, I think she's taken on the role really well that way. Uh, so for anyone that sees her on the way out the door tonight, you know, give her, give her an ad-avoid. Um, since last week, a lot has happened, uh, but I have not officially resigned from the school committee yet. Uh, honestly, my plan was to make it official, you know, before the committee did its next action. Um, and while on vacation, you know, tonight's interviews were scheduled. Uh, because I'm technically still on the board, uh, I thought it was really important for me to be here tonight, even, even though my family would probably prefer that I wasn't, uh, I thought it was, uh, important to just be president. Uh, but a week ago, I also announced that I did not intend to participate in the selection of the new interim superintendent. That is because I think it's important for the new board to be fully supportive of the new superintendent and not be saddled with someone that, uh, you know, an old board member that's a part of the chooses. Um, so, uh, I've agreed, you know, I've made myself available tonight. I intend to participate in tonight's meeting, address the meeting. Um, I'll provide my opinion as the other members want it. Um, however, my plan was to completely abstain from voting this evening. Uh, so as to not have my, uh, influence in any way on the person that gets selected and allow the superintendent that is selected to be selected by those that have been working right alongside him or her, uh, for the coming years. Um, and so, uh, that, that was my intention. With that, I will, I will say that, you know, if the board would like a unanimous vote on a, a candidate, uh, I, I am happy to provide a vote, but that was not my, my intention was to abstain and allow you all to, to make that choice. With that said, uh, I think that the candidate that has received some, uh, some positive recognition so far would also be a candidate that, uh, that I would identify as the front runner this evening. Um, Dr. Petruno Gogan has the experience, uh, has the diversity of experience, has experiences in districts that have some similar characteristics to Winchman and have a great deal of, uh, diverse experiences that I think will serve Winchman well. She also has the ability to come in very quickly and, you know, be able to identify those areas where our district can benefit from her expertise. Uh, I think some of the other candidates, uh, could have also, Dr. Delio, uh, as an example, uh, had a strong resume, strong background. Uh, Miss Lapointe has the, the local connection and the, and the passion for Winchman. Uh, and those two candidates, I think, would have some, certainly some strong strengths that, uh, that are worthy of consideration. Uh, but, uh, Dr. Petruno Gogan really stood out to me. And so my, my comments align with the other two members.
Thank you, Ryan. Um, so, and that comes back to me. And I would absolutely concur with what you do. I'm sorry. I would absolutely concur that, um, you know, Anthony definitely, you really, you really did steal the thunder. There's nothing left for us to say. Sorry, you did it. Um, you know, really, you, you did say it this afternoon, but she'd be, you know, if, if she was, if everybody was like her, we would have our choice to make, but she really did, even among such a great group of candidates and really did have a, an amazing group of candidates. Um, and those were the four finalists, you know. So, um, I, I would go with, um, Dr. Gogan myself too. Sorry.
Vote?
Yes.
I need to vote, not only a candidate for, um, selection, I vote, uh, first candidate. Dr. Petruno Gogan?
Second. All right, and, okay. Do you guys want to keep that? Did you hear them? I, I think that was okay. Okay. All right. So we have a motion to nominate Dr. Petruno Gogan as our interim superintendent. Um, and we have a second. And now I will do a roll call vote. Um, and I will start with Anthony.
Aye.
Miss Cast?
Aye.
Ryan?
Uh, just wondering if you'll take deliberation on the motion?
Yes, absolutely. Did, did anybody have discussion on the motion?
Uh, the only question that comes to mind is that, uh, the motion, uh, may need to be subject to successful contract negotiations.
Yes.
I don't believe we've had a contract negotiation with, uh, that person, uh, Dr. Gogan yet. And, uh, she may, I, I don't know this for sure, but she may require a labor for being able to participate so shortly after retirement. Um, so those couple of things will, might want to be worked into the motion if, uh, if the board sees it.
Good point. Yes. Um, we can, well, let's put it this way. So we commit, do you want to suggest a friendly amendment to Anthony's motion?
I move to add to, uh, Mr. Finley's motion, the qualifiers of successfully negotiating a contract with this likely candidate and assuring her eligibility, uh, to serve in the role, uh, with the now state retirement system.
All right, let's write it down. Do you write that, Dave? Is that, is this a duty amendment?
Aye, second.
Great. And that is the one to make their approval. All right. Okay. First, we have to vote on the amendments.
Aye.
Uh, Ryan?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That was difficult. All right. And now we can vote on the, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any. I'm going to start today.
So we're going to main motion?
We're voting on the main motion, Dave.
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Ryan?
Uh, I will abstain.
Okay. And I vote aye. I have to stop saying that. So, um, we have three in, um, in agreement and one abstention. But we now have, once we finalize any negotiations and if she accepts, we will have an interim superintendent. Um, well, before we do that, um, so our agenda tonight had, um, an announcement of the appointed interim superintendent. I'm going to note that, um, Ruth Ann is in Portugal, which is five hours ahead of us. I am not calling and waking her up. So, that said, um, I hope that you will all bear with us if we, um, make a little bit of a change. So Dave, do you want to make a motion to make a change to our agenda?
Yeah, well, it's only a, uh, suggestion, a motion anyway.
Right.
So what I am going to do is I move to enter executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, interim superintendent of schools, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And we will adjourn from that session.
Unless you have nothing to say.
I think we've heard it all.
You have nothing to say?
I know, I know.
I'm shy.
I'm shy. Believe it. I do find some, who knows?
Nope, 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 um, definitely.
I think I need to get to work now.
No, I do too. Um, does, does anybody have any closing comments they would like to share? Or we go into executive session?
I have none.
Okay. Um, so everybody else can go home. If we have seconds.
I have a second.
All right. So we have a motion. Second, I would like to start with Anthony.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ryan, are you joining us?
Aye.
All right. And aye. We are now, we're going to begin the second. No, we're not.